All right, we might have some guests through the course of the night. Um, there's a couple of folks that expressed interest in the, in conservation. And um, yeah, so if they jump on, we'll, we'll have them introduce themselves. One of the things that I have suggested to anyone that I've spoken with is that they, they come to at least two meetings. Um, as guests and before we put them to a vote in the sense of, you know, first of all, that'll show commitment that they're actually going to come to the meetings. And then um, there is one open alternate position. Um, and it would be nice to have that filled up, especially as life gets busy. If anybody misses a meeting, we could still have quorums and votes. All right, we've been doing pretty good with that. Um.
I just also wanted to say, um, Sue Stoffaker, I invited her to attend tonight. Um, because she um, has headed up the town road cleanup for many, many years. So she will be joining us really soon.
All right. So before we have guests, let's uh, let's get this party started. We have enough for a quorum. So um, do I welcome and do I hear a motion for the approval of, well? We don't have to do a motion to start the meeting, correct?
Correct.
All right. Sorry, guys, uh, with the, my sleeping.
A little sleep deprivation?
Yeah, my short-term memory shot, so.
Uh, no, we just have to approve both January and February's minutes because we didn't have a quorum in February to approve those minutes.
Okay. So uh, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for January and February as written?
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the past two meetings.
Right here in a second?
A second.
All right, perfect. So that's been first and seconded. Any uh, comments? All right, here, no comments. Uh, all in favor? Say aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or any abstained?
Abstaining because I wasn't there.
Okay. You got that, Erin?
Yeah, we're good.
All right. All right, additions to the agenda and uh, public comment. Uh, there is one addition I'm gonna make to the agenda. And that is, uh, I just received a letter. Um, from Newtown. And I want to, to share that with you guys today, but we'll uh, I'll go ahead and put that up a little bit later. Um, did I send that to you yet, Erin?
Uh, no, you did not.
All right, I'll send it to you. I, I just scanned it a little while ago.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so I will scan that over and I'll, that way you can make it part of the minutes uh, for this meeting. And that way, everybody will have a chance to take a close look at it.
Sounds good.
All right. Any other additions to this agenda? We do have uh, actually two other things that we have to talk about. One is that we were supposed to have elections. Um, eh, at the end of the year. That's part of the learning curve we're going through here. Um, so we do have to have elections at some point. It wouldn't be appropriate to have it today without uh, any advance notice. So we'll, we'll put it into the minutes today that will have a um, we'll have an election. Um, in uh, April's meeting. Okay, would anybody be opposed to that?
No, fine.
Yeah, it's just a, a course of, course of business. Um, and uh, do we have to have a nominating committee? Does anybody know?
No, you don't. I think you can just discuss and see who wants to step up to the plate.
All right, perfect.
I think that's the way we did it last year too, if I remember right.
In the last, in the last twenty years.
All right, um. All right, so that is one. And number two is, we just wanna finalize what we want. We have to submit a budget to uh, to the town. So after we uh, go over our old bit, uh, old business and potentially new business, we'll go into um, discussing how we're gonna do the vote for next month and then um, what we wanna focus on dollar-wise for a budget. All right. We don't have to, we can come up with a, with the dollars behind it, but really what we wanna focus on as a, as a group, as an organization from now through the end of this year. Okay?
Um, Lorenzo, I, I spoke to Kim, Kim Baron about that. And I, I think the deadline was January. It was like, it was already too late. I think she's just gonna use last year's budget. Have you, have you spoken to her? Has she been in touch with you?
Well, I think that's what we were, that's what she was gonna do. Um, but we need to decide what that budget, what we're really gonna spend those dollars on. So the dollars will be the same, but how we're gonna, how we're gonna utilize those dollars. We just don't wanna use it because that we have them. We wanna use it because we, you know, we have some purpose behind it. All right. Uh, so old business, uh, five cent returnable update. Do you have any update on that, Jess?
Um, just that I've spoken to Patrick about it and um, uh, I don't, we don't have any further, further ideas except to find someone, a person or a group, town group that would be willing to do it. Um, I think it was at the last meeting we talked about. I, I don't remember if it was the last meeting here. Um, that some of you weren't in, but um, or if it was the one before that, but we had talked about possibly having um, like a, one day a month or one day a week uh, at the transfer station, say like Saturday, and have everybody bring them then, if we had a person to that could be there with a truck and you just load it onto a truck and then take it. So it's just a matter of finding the person or group or persons to do that.
So one of the other things I, I um, wanted to bring to the, to uh, the commission is the idea of, of there's certain groups that do fundraising, they collect cans. They, different cancer societies, that's one of the things that they do. Uh, I know that Milford Bank had just done it. They were supposed to get me the name or the contact. But the organization would in fact handle the collection of the ca, of the, the processing of the cans. Uh, and maybe we have some volunteers just once a month uh, at the transfer station, um, collecting them. And that way, we're not asking residents to, to do too much work. We're just saying, hey, do us a favor. Separate your cans and, and collectibles uh, at home. And instead of bringing them down to the transfer station every week or whenever you remember, maybe it's the first Saturday of every month or something like that. And then we could have different organizations uh, that were passionate about uh, participate over the course, you know, every month. You know, until we find a better solution. So I think that's a temporary solution. I think the long-term solution would, the solution everybody wants is uh, another organization that comes in here and basically picks up what, where the last one left off. And the money went to the food bank and the fuel bank. And we can still collect for the fuel bank and food bank of Roxbury. However, somebody has to actually go and turn these things in.
Yeah, our, our company that was doing it is no longer picking it up. And then um, I know Judy and Patrick both said they called about ten other organizations to try to see. There was no, no success, so.
Yeah. So again, ma, you, you know, if, if that is an avenue, um, I'm gonna make a motion that we explore once a month, collection, communicated via the town um, to fund various um, worthwhile organization, nonprofit organizations. And say, okay, we're just, we're gonna cut, we're gonna create the spot for residents to drop it off. We're gonna m- market that, you know, in the sense of, you know, communicate that to the town efficiently and make it a normal thing. Um, but then, you know, that's, that's kinda where we begin and end. Again, maybe help with volunteering from time to time. But we're not gonna make it a, a task of the, of the commission.
So I have a, I have a question. So may I ask a question?
Sure.
So um, once a month, if you have people dropping off and everything, so then what happens? So everything gets dropped off and then what?
And that organization, whatever nonprofit organization it is, would be responsible for recycling those cans and bottles. And the, the, again, collecting them from the drop-off point, which would be the transfer station. And they would keep whatever they get.
Okay. Oh. So then Roxbury would not get any of that um, money for Roxbury relief, correct?
Well, if we, if a month, they wanted to do Roxbury relief and we had volunteers, then it would a hundred percent of that would go to Roxbury relief. You know, the, the, the first thing that we need to worry ourselves about is that we have easily recyclable items that need to be recycled. That's step one, right? So they're not going in landfills, they're not going in, into the wrong places. The second one is if those nickels that we all front whenever we buy one of these uh, cans or bottles, um, we deposit them, right? That somebody gets it back. And we wanna make sure that they're worthwhile organizations. Right? It's not somebody collecting and, and pocketing them themselves. So if the Boy Scouts wanted to do it for Roxbury Relief, then a hundred percent would go to Roxbury Relief where before, I think it was two cents on a can. You know? Um, Kathy, you wanted to add?
Well, that was the question I had too, and I think, I think it's a great idea, you know?
Yeah.
Money to be had, and uh, perhaps we could help with the volunteerism actually after it's collected.
Yeah, I, and again, it's nothing to say, if we as an organization wanna go ahead and say, you know, we're gonna take um, four months out of the year and collect that for, for Roxbury. And we are gonna volun, we're gonna roll up our hands of volunteer on those four uh, Saturdays of the year. Um, we can do that, but I'm not gonna make that decision for us. Plus, we have to see what kind of legs this thing has before we get to that stage anyways.
Okay.
Um, Lorenzo, I, I hate to, I hate to rant on this parade here, but you know, you sit down and you do the math, um, how much money are we gonna collect in a week worth the bottles of can? Is it worth?
In a month. In a month, not a week.
Okay, dude, um, um, so you're gonna ask people to collect, uh, hold their bottles and cans and bring them to the transfer station on one day a
A month.
One day a month.
Yeah.
And then somebody's gonna pick it up?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, yeah, a thousand cans is worth about fifty bucks uh, at, at a nickel a pop. Um.
I gotcha. But somehow, but somehow Roxbury did enough that at two cents a can, they were getting five, six grand a year.
Yeah, so it's worth it.
Um, yeah, that would be, that's, I mean, if we can make it work like that, but um.
So it sounds like, i- it sounds like before it was about a thousand dollars worth uh, a month in the past. And we got about half of it. Or a little less than half of it.
So you're sure about those figures? A thousand of them?
Well, that's what we were, that's what we were told. We were told it was five to six thousand dollars a year.
I didn't have any pressure. It was more like uh,
By selectmen?
We were getting.
Well, so let, let's call it rumors around town.
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, uh, I know you're gonna, we're gonna get resistance from Albert, um, if the transfer station is the location.
Well, the complaint, the complaint from Albert was that he had to do the work. He had to separate them, which I don't, eh, however, eh, long I've been here, I've always separated my stuff. He had to move the bag, carry the bag, pick up the bag. The town has gone out and bought, yeah, the town has gone out and bought these things that all you gotta put the bag, bag in it and it collects it and makes it nice. I- it should be very easy. It's not a space thing. The um, I tell you that w- we haven't been recycling cans and bottles lately. Yet, there's been traffic jams up there, the same as always. There's plenty of room to set up. And we just set up someplace and
Yeah, you can set up someplace. My, one suggestion, if we're gonna do it once a month, I would, I would suggest um, that you allow people to, you make it a week, so that, because the transfer station is open on uh, Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Saturdays.
We can, we can go over that. However, that would mean that we'd have to have a con, free container up there where we can store them on, let's say Tuesday and Wednesday. And then they'd be collected on Saturday.
Yeah.
And then who's gonna be responsible for, for that? That'll be Albert, because you're not gonna give volunteers three days during a week.
No, but I'm saying, if someone's gonna come pick this up on Saturday, if the bins are there on, on, you know, they come, somebody's gotta put the bins up there for whatever time it's picked up.
Yeah.
The bins will go there on Tuesday and left, left there, and then who's ever gonna pick it up picks it up on Saturday. Just like people that go to the transfer station on Tuesday or Wednesday or Saturday, they, they can do it any, anytime that particular week.
I, I, I hear what you're saying. Let's figure out, let's, first of all, see if this thing has legs and then we'll worry about the actual function.
We have to find somebody who's gonna
Right.
Who's gonna wanna go up there. And I'm, I'm, I'm guessing, I'm su, just speculating that someone's gonna, the question is gonna be, is it worth my while? How many cans and bottles am I gonna pick up?
Right. So we have to see if this thing has legs before we worry about anything. And that's why I'm saying, let's not put too much work into it. The first step is, my motion is that we, we see if this has legs. And if it does, then we worry about the actual function of it. Right? Because there, by the way, let's not start this on a, on a Saturday that it might snow. You know, i- if, if we, if we bring this to fruition, if this thing comes to fruition during the April meeting, um, you know, it's April, May that we're gonna be doing it. And it won't be bad to spend a couple hours there on a Saturday standing around. Right? But again, I don't wanna invest too much time on the things that could go wrong with it and the reasons why it might not work. Or the resistance that it might have if we find out that we're not gonna do it at all.
So Lorenzo, I have recorded your motion and I will second that motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? So we're going to, so the vote is to see, a- a- again, see if, if we can come to some functionality where there's enough desire in town, enough desire with uh, nonprofit organizations uh, to have a once a month collection of the cans that goes a hundred percent to whatever organization is uh, willing to take on the burden. Um, no other, just hearing no other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right. Uh, I just noticed during our discussion that Jonathan Gould has joined us. Jonathan is one of the folks that I had mentioned that showed interest in the, in the commission. I wanna welcome you, Jonathan, to our, I, I don't know when you jumped on, but I wanna welcome you to our, uh, to our meeting.
The link didn't work, so it took me a while to, to get in. I went into regular Zoom. It's nice being here. Thank you for having me.
Hi, Jonathan.
Jonathan, real quick, can you just tell everybody uh, who you are and or, you know, a quick one minute who you are and why you're interested in the commission and?
Yeah, I got it. That could take about a half an hour, but I'll try to condense it into a minute. Um, I'm a two-and-a-half-year resident of Roxbury. I moved here from Washington DC. I retired last year. I was a employment lawyer in Washington DC and before that in West Hartford, Connecticut. And uh, so I was in Washington for fifteen years. I moved to Roxbury at the end of nineteen. I live on Transylvania Road. Um, and I, I failed in uh, attempt to get on the zoning board of appeals. So this is uh, this is the second, uh, my second attempt to uh, become involved in town government. So hopefully I'll make it this time.
There you go.
Um, I have a lot of time on my hands, uh, do a lot of exercise. I, uh, I had a pool built here last year, uh, so that keeps me busy during the spring and summer. Um, and um, I have a very active dog who terrorizes the entire neighborhood. So please don't hold that against me.
We like it.
That's who I am. And my, my spouse also uh, is with me, uh, and uh, she's about ready to retire. She works remotely uh, at her uh, NGO in Washington DC, but she's gonna be retiring this spring, so. I have a grandson and sons who visit me from uh, New York and Hoboken uh, every other weekend, so um, you know, my house is usually pretty full.
Perfect. Well, thanks for uh, thanks for joining us tonight, Jonathan, and we'd love to get to know you a little bit more and um, yeah, and, and your input onto our organization. So uh, just as a reminder, this is open uh, to the public. And you know, the public can make comments. Um, the only thing that, that a non uh, member can't do is, is vote. So uh, thank you. And, and again, if you wanna jump in with something, just uh, if you've got any ideas.
No, I'll, I'll, I, I can tell you right now, I don't have any ideas and I don't intend to interrupt the meeting.
All right, thank, thank you, Jonathan.
At least not yet.
All right, so the other big thing is the pollinator pathway update. Uh, Tony, Erin, any updates on your guys' end?
Uh, yes, um, uh, I, I, I mean, I'm on this steering committee with the um, um, the garden club, the Roxbury Land Trust, um, and uh, um, Ridgewater's involved too. And uh, we're trying to get um, keep, keep the momentum going for the pollinator pathway initiative. And one of the things we were talking about, uh, is an event in the spring. And it, uh, the garden club kinda wants to tie in with their plants, which they do in May. And there's some issues with that because um, pollinator-friendly plants are not in bloom in May. So this just may be a, a series of lectures around that time. Uh, so there are lots of things that we discussed. Then we did discuss bringing in a lecturer and it was agreed, the other groups agreed. I didn't commit us to this. To hire a fellow named uh, I think it was Mark to be hired. Uh, and I think his fee was three hundred dollars, um, that he would give a lecture. And uh, the other groups are kicking in seventy-five bucks a piece. I said, well, I think we can get the Conservation Commission to commit seventy-five dollars, but I need to bring it up at the next meeting. So um, you know, here I am with my handout to see if we can uh, get approval to uh, to fund this speaker to the zoom of seventy-five dollars. We're taking like one-fourth of it. Uh, the garden club is taking four, the uh, uh, land trust, I think is taking a fourth, and who else? Ridgewater, Ridgewater. Um, Ridgewater land trust, I think is picking up a fourth, so.
So, so, Tony, did I just hear you say that you're making a motion that we fund this uh, project? The speaker for seven, in the amount of seventy-five dollars?
Uh, seventy-five bucks, yes, that's exactly what I'm, uh,
I will second that motion as I feel that that is uh, exactly what the, the Weiner Grant uh, money is supposed to be used for.
Yeah, we could use the Weiner Grant money for that.
Yeah. Uh, so that, that vote, that motion has been made and seconded. Do we have any discussion?
I think it's a wonderful idea.
Great.
All right. All right, with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion passed. And Erin, you'll facilitate uh, how we gotta get that, the, the information to town hall so we can get that check cut?
Yes.
Just make sure when we do that it's directly allocated to, from the, that Weiner Grant money, because.
Um, yeah, um, Erin, do you wanna, do you wanna take care of that? You want me to? Because I, I've got the information. I can even send it to you or um, and then you can uh, talk to Kim about it? You wanna do it that way or you want me to? Either way.
How about this? I will let you guys take care of it.
That's fine.
All right. All right, any other updates about the pollinator pathway? Any dates that you want us to put on the calendar here?
Uh, there had, there, well, there haven't been too many firm decisions made, but uh, we have another meeting coming up. Uh, and you know, I'll keep you abreast of what the plan is. But right now, we've got some funding to do this, which is a good thing. Um, but there's also been some other discussion about um, getting the town to to, to plant more native plantings, uh, to get the town to stop doing all this mowing. Uh, and uh, um, some of the other neighboring towns have um, um, they're, they're not allowing the planting of non-native plantings on town property, so.
So that's actually the letter that I'm gonna share, Tony. So let's uh, let me talk about that. And while we have Tova here, I wanna kinda pick her brain on a couple things too.
The other, the other thing too, Lorenzo, um,
Yeah.
I think the idea of um, working with who, who's ever gonna put this solar field up there uh, by the, by the transfer station. If they've gotta put, oh, you, you brought this up already, but if they've gotta put some sort of plantings between the worlds, let's make them, um, you know, uh, pollinator-friendly native plantings.
Yeah, absolutely.
And it's sort of like, everybody benefits from that. They don't have to mow it. Um, and uh, it's gonna be, you know, consistent with the initiative that we're trying to put here, put forward.
That's definitely something. I think that uh, there's some, for technical reasons, there's uh, there's been some uh, push, not pushback, but uh, w- w- we're not stopping, but we're not uh, putting the, the pedal to the metal here. We're kinda coasting on the solar field. Um, and um, I expect that to be brought back up in the next couple of months. And so, but as soon as that starts getting momentum again, we'll bring it back to the commission. And, and anytime I'm asked about it, um, I make sure that with, that project's gonna be a multi um, faceted project. It's not just gonna be solar. And actually, they're doing, if, if anybody's been uh, my pediatric, my, my new pediatrician is uh, right down the street from uh, New Milford uh, Police Department. And they're putting up a giant solar field right to next to the uh, police department, which is kinda nice to see. Um, all right, so with that, we're gonna go into new business. And in part of this new business, I wanna go into um, I wanna uh, start off before we go into Earth Day and the projects, uh, to share with you guys this letter. Erin, I just emailed it to you so you can add it to the minutes. Uh, Erin will send this out when she sends out the minutes. Uh, but basically, it is a letter that was forwarded three times before it got to me. That's why it was sent out on the fifteenth and I just received it. Uh, I made three stops. Um, and it's from Monroe in Newtown, uh, chairman of the uh, Conservation Commissions. And basically spoke about just what Tony had brought up. Uh, they're trying to, to pass regulations that the municipalities be required uh, to uh, to only plant native. Um, Tova, I said I, I wanted to pick your brain for a little bit. Uh, native doesn't necessarily mean pollinator-friendly from what I understand. Um, and one of the things that, that, again, whenever we, we talk about anything, we try to get the most mileage out of it. Um, are there, is there a list of, of native plantings that would also be considered good pollinators? I don't know, Tova, I know she's muted. I don't know. Are you still on Tova? She might not still be on. She might have walked away. Well, anyways, oh, there she is.
Yeah, I just was trying to find the unmute thing, um, because, with the letter up. Um, I haven't read the whole letter yet, but um, Um, I haven't read the whole letter yet, but, um. Uh, there are m- m- many, many books, you know, a, a lot written about it. Um, you've got a point that native does not necessarily mean pollinator friendly, but. It's a whole big world out there and it's, you know, not only about. Animals and insects that are able to pollinate. It's also about habitat and utilizing habitat and that sort of thing. So, um. You're certainly headed in the right direction by asking for native. And, um, you, personally, I, I get. A little ruffled, ruffled, my feathers get a little ruffled when they just combine the words. Non-native and invasive together because they're certainly not always joined together, you know? Um, and I would think that, you know, the first battle to wage on this is against invasive plants. You know, that known invasives. And there's a lot of land that does have barberry and that sort of thing planted on it. Um, intentionally planted on it. And, you know, those would be the plants that I would, you know, you know. I would really, really, you know, try to avoid there. Many of them are now legislated against in our state. Um, some of them, the dates that they're, you know. That, uh, in, in the policing starts hasn't, you know, come up yet because they were trying to give. The nursery some, some, you know, wiggle room on it. But, you know, that to me, I mean, native. And pollinator friendly, all these things require a lot of research for somebody. Um, to know whether they're going to work in, in the, the area that they're planting. To know whether they're actually native to our region. Um, it, it, there's a lot of legwork that has to be done on that.
Well, I tell you, I, I, I think an awesome senior project. Uh, for someone who's, who wants to get into ag. Would be to create an easy, friendly chart, homeowner chart. That had, uh, what an invasive species and what to do about it. Uh, what a native is. Um, what a pollinator is, you know, and, and again, the, the one thing that I, that I. It irks me about, uh, anything in, in the municipal world is. When they say, we don't want you to do this. Right? And, and they make it very difficult. Where I'm thinking is. You know, and when I go and speak with the, these folks from Monroe and, and Newtown, and Newtown, I'll say the same thing. Is listen, make it easy. So if you want the municipality to, to do native, that's good. Um, tell them which plants they are. So they don't have to do the research because I agree with you. It gets very confusing. But there's people like you, Tova, who are very interested in this that could probably help them. Um, just tell them how to do it the right way rather than what. You know, don't do it, telling them not to do it the wrong way.
So with you on that, um, to just be positive about it and. Uh, you know, say, okay, what's the habitat like? Okay, the habitat's like, you know, wet, it's dry, whatever it is, you know, it's shady, it's sunny. Here's a list that would work for that. Um, you know, uh, I, I think that. There'd be pushback if we asked people to do a whole lot of research. That they're not really equipped to do. They don't have the time. And so, you know, if it was made easy for them with lists, with. Options with, you know, something that's collated, maybe sun plants, shade plants. You know, shrubs.
Wet plants.
Wetland plants, um, plants that, um. Are, a- and again, there's, uh, there, there's some wonderful resources now, just, um. There, there are nurseries that are making ecotypes for our region, for Connecticut. Available to us. And, um, you know, it's just, there's a lot going on.
Somebody's got a call. All right. So th- this is the letter, Tova. Thank you for that. What I'll do is I'll, I'll, uh, coordinate a call with Barbara and Holly over here. And, um, and I'll, I'll kind of see what their municipalities have done already. Um, and then from there, I'll report back in April and see, um. You know, what are everybody, we'll get, by then everyone's going to have some time to think about this, to have read the letter and to share your thoughts.
Can I just say one? It can be tricky that when you just give, um. Common names, like, uh, we were sent a, a list, uh, this a while ago. And it said like mint. And, and. We need botanical names, I really think. I mean, it, there's a zillion mints out there. Um, and we just don't want confusion, you know?
Yeah, and with pictures and everything and specifics. I agree with you and that's why I think it would make a great project. I, I think senior projects are already all done for this year. But maybe we could, we could start this process and that's, it's municipal, uh, world here. Nothing's going to go quick. So maybe for next year, this will be a good project. And, and Tony, your question?
Yeah, I, I, I request, can you, can you, um, email a copy of the letter out to everybody?
Yeah, I sent it to Erin. She's going to make it as a part of the minutes.
Okay.
It'll be connected to the minutes when they come out.
And then the, the other, the other, I, suggestion I would put forth to consider is, um. The towns of Newtown, Monroe, they've got a lot of, um, uh, uh, commercial establishments, uh, that would be affected. Roxbury's got next to no commercial establishments of any significance that, that would, you know, be a big enough footprint to. Sort of make this worthwhile if you're going to put this in commercial establishments. But we've got a hell of a lot of municipal projects. It would seem like it's like a ninety-nine to one ratio when you're looking at the amount of land, it's municipal plantings versus commercial.
Well, again, I think.
You've got to get more pushback from commercial. Is it worth it? Maybe we just do it with the town. We're probably going to get a lot more bang for the buck.
Well, again, it's commercial and municipal, right? And. You know, that, that, at that part is where you make the regulations. Right? The two businesses in town aren't going to have a problem, Tony. Um, you know, we'd have to have the municipal, have the town accept it. But, um, on a top of that, you know, where we can become effective is education to the community. On why these kind of regulations were passed, what the benefit is. What, you know, what the harm of the non-natives are and all that other stuff. So, um. Yeah, I mean, i- it's, it's a regulation on the municipal side and on the commercial side. But it could also be a good thing to educate the public about and have them make their own decision on if they want to. If they see the value in doing, in promoting native plantings and pollinator plantings. You can't force a resident to do anything.
No, you can't force the residents to do anything. And I'm wa- I'm just wondering if you're going to get. Pushback from some of the commercial establishments.
Which one?
The Roxbury Market.
How many plantings does he have? I've never seen him put a plant up.
Well, I mean, it, it's just. You know, there are some people who are, you know, they're going to look at this, they're going to say, god damn it, another. Another regulation, we're getting regulated out of business, even though it has no impact. They're just going to use it as an excuse to complain. And where's the benefit?
I'm with Tony. I think you should just, personally, I think you should just. Like, give a list of invasives or something like that and educate that way. Say. These are bad, I, this is, these are bad ideas. You know, this, we shouldn't be growing these and, and just leave it at that. Don't regulate people.
Well, the first thing is that to see really what they have, what, what Newtown and Monroe have. I'll talk to Holly and Barbara, collect their information, report back to, to us. We're not going to do anything else with it now, except think about it until April. All right. And then, uh, if anybody knows any connection up at the school. That we might be able to corral either, uh, an individual senior project or maybe. Between now and the end of the year, maybe a class wants to take it up as a project. I think that would be something that would be useful for generations to come.
I have connections. I can reach out.
All right. So I nominate Erin as the head of the, uh, Research Committee on Native and Not Native Species in Roxbury.
Thanks, Lorenzo.
Well, I, I figured you had that little sliver of, of room on your plate. I would, uh.
Oh, yeah.
I would make sure it was full before somebody else took it.
Thank you.
All right.
If, if, we should also, I would. The possibility to bring in, uh, Maplebank Farm. Because Curry Peters is going to be running that. And, uh. If they had their greenhouses, I think it'd be amenable to starting, to start raising some of these, uh, uh, you know, native species, uh. And, and he's knowledgeable about this, so I'm more knowledgeable than I am.
You know, I'm, I'm always a guy who says the dollars have to align for everybody. It has to make sense and dollars have to align. When those things happen, you know, the wheels move pretty, pretty, uh, pretty quickly. So, yeah, I, I, I think that if we make it good for a local business, that do the right thing and we supported it with education in the community. I think it would have some likes.
I have a question. I have a question. Okay. Um, and I know in the past, when we were considering plants for Joey's Trail, we went to Earth Tones. And they have all those classifications, I believe, Tova, for shade plants, um, native species, et cetera. Uh, could we possibly not necessarily impose on them? They are a business. Uh, perhaps use a little bit of our budget to get that information from them?
They issue, they issue a catalog and it's, it's really, um. I- it's, and, and that's a really good point, Kathy. I didn't even think of that resource, but they are very local and. They issue a catalog, um, and it's all very specific. Um, so that, you know, that could be a, we, we might be able to ask them if they'd be willing to make that. Um, available as a resource. But again, you know, I mean. You've got to understand, like, apples, apples are not native. You know, that's a non-native tree. That's Maplebank's main, one of their main businesses, um.
I'm, I'm not, I, I'm not, I'm not saying we approach Maplebank and tell them they can't, they have to stop growing apples. I'm, I'm saying. They could use their greenhouses to raise some of these plantings that we want people to put in their. Uh, put in their gardens or want some of those. Because they've got the, they've got the capabilities of doing it. That, those, these things are hard to, 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 to grow. They're hard to, um. We tried it here. I've tried it. My wife's tried. There's a lot of work that's involved.
Well, let's, let's first get our ducks in a row, find out, collect all the data. And then we can see what, you know, what we can create a committee and the committee can actually go and do the. Do that work by reaching out to the local farms and nurseries, nurseries to say, hey. We're going to invest in the education, maybe the speaker series, maybe the, the research, the fund, the research. Maybe to, to, to bring in some specialists. Um, and we're going to publicize this in the community, but we have to have. You know, when, when we get the community excited about this, we have to make it easily, easy and affordable. For the residents to do the right thing, uh, and, and plant the natives and plant the pollinators. So.
The one thing that, the, the one thing we discussed in, in my steering committee meetings. Is to, um, to have people do, um. Do, do these things in small planters. Uh, you can get somebody to commit to a small planter with a couple of native plantings, pollinator friendly plant. In an, in a pot, in a, just a, um, some sort of, you know, it's not, it doesn't have to be in your garden. So this way it's, it's, it's doable and it's not a hell of a lot of work. And at least it gets people involved and they get their feet.
Uh, I, again, good, another good idea. Kathy, you want to share something else?
Just, just to say that, uh, our commission had done years ago a thing called Freedom Lawn. It was an expo at the town hall and one of the, um, one of the booths, so to speak. Was Earth Tones and they were very willing to share the information. They might, they might very well volunteer to be a speaker. Because it would help their business.
Yeah, you know, we, we, yeah, they, they, they came up in our conversations, Earth Tones.
Do you have a, uh?
Also, um, Planters Choice over in Waterville and Watertown, they have ecotypes in Connecticut. Um, you know, small little plants that they're making available. To, um, you know, to groups, to whatever. Um, I mean, you have to pay for them, of course, but that's one of their projects right now, Planters Choice. And they're doing it in a huge wholesale level.
So Tova, do you have a connection over at Earth Tone?
Yeah.
Okay, can you reach out to them sometime before our April meeting and see if you can get a, uh, see if they'd be willing to share that catalog with us?
Sure. I mean, um, what, what do you need to do? How do you need to use the catalog? Do you need to have them print extra copies? Because they probably couldn't do that, but.
Well, if they have it in PDF, that would be the best.
Okay.
If they have electronic copy, that would be the best. We'll get it, we'll, we'll get it to. Um, either myself or, or Erin and we'll get it, uh, to everybody. And, um, and that way we can reference that for future conversations.
Okay, I, I can, I mean, I can check their website too and see if they, even, they might have it up there.
They do, they do have a plant list you can download and then you can, um, they, I'm on their website. Now, they said, try our plant selection wizard and you can put in all different types of soil types, sun type, what flower, what pollinator. So, yep, it's.
But do, do they also break it down by natives?
They're all native.
They're all native.
Okay.
That's what they do. Yeah.
Okay.
I have, I have a question. How about having a plant exchange of native plants?
We can bring that up in, in the future. That might be a good idea, but we're not, we're not there for this. That, that's not good for this conversation. But it's a great idea for a future pro- potential future project. Um, so. With that. I was going to say, it's, it's seven fifty. Well, collected data, Caitlin and Tova, if you guys want to just look at the, the, the Planters Choice and Earth Tones. Um, and see what free information is available that we can reference in future meetings about this. And then Erin is going to reach out to, uh, the school to see if there's either a project that can be done before the end of the year. Um, or if we can try to corral somebody for next year's senior project.
Yep, all good. Um, just with the plant exchange, just a quick note is that we're being, uh, the invasive, the jet. Um, the jumping worms. So, um, I'm part of the Yukon Master Gardener Program and we're trying not to do plant exchange because. The, um, they're just taking over. So you can get their little tiny eggs in your soil and then you spread it. So just.
Via plant exchange?
Yeah, via plant exchange, unfortunately.
Hmm, okay.
All right. All right. So. Next is the, the, the big part of this conversation. Which is the projects for two thousand twenty-two, where we're going to spend a couple bucks. Well, we know we're going to spend some of the dollars. Uh, with the Pollinator Pathway. We're all very passionate about that and, and we still have money to spend on that. So that's good. Um, we decided already we're going to do Earth Day and Arbor Day. Um, which we pretty much have to nail that down. What are the dates on that? Do you have that, Erin, handy?
Uh, no, it, so we didn't decide at the, at the last one. It was a suggestion. Um, I had only just heard back recently. Uh, so let me look.
In Janu- in January, at the meeting, we voted that we were going to do something, Earth Day and Arbor Day.
Oh, okay.
We just didn't say what we were going to.
Hey, okay. So we have quite a few, uh, projects that Jess had, uh, well, ideas that Jess had thrown out. Um, to me in an email. If you want to elaborate on those, Jess, I have it up here. I can, I can always share it too.
Yeah, let's share it. The, what are we, we were going to do the cleanup for Earth Day. So Earth, that, the cleanup. Is basically a done deal, correct, Jess?
Yeah, um, last meeting, um, we were talking about. We should have stuff either on the twenty-third or I think Arbor Day is the twenty-ninth or near the twenty-ninth of April. But I think the twenty-third would be better, um, just because that's when, um, you know, Earth Day is. Just because that's when, um, you know, Earth Day is, is uh, the day before and I think that's when a lot of stuff is happening. Um, there's. Our, we do our regular town cleanup, um, which that's why I invited Sue because she's headed that up. This year because we're part of H R A, they are partnering with um. The Bridgewater Land Trust and they are doing a Bridgewater Road Cleanup that they're advertising and they're giving prizes. Um, and they're also giving out uh, vests and bags and gloves materials. And I um, don't have more details on that because Jen Heaton Jones is on vacation this week, but I have a meeting with her next week to um. Go over the details of that, but I know you had mentioned. It was either last year or the year before of trying to put together some sort of like contest thing to get more participation. So that's already happening. That we can participate with, um, and she's got a flyer. Um, that she's developing. She's already got one for Bridgewater. She can develop one for us. We just need to put. Uh, you know, the Conservation Commission on there that, that she's part, they're partnering with us and. Um, and then. Whatever it has about the prizes and that sort of thing, I can let you guys know later, but I thought that that would be easy just to, for us to jump into that.
So Jess, do we have to supply the prizes or is H R R A supplying the prizes? Okay, great.
No, yeah, so um, I just thought since Bridgewater's doing it. And we were doing it anyway, we could just, you know, do what they are doing and, and pump it up a little bit.
All right, so are we good with that being? Actual Earth Day, which is Fri- well, Friday, April twenty-second is Earth Day. Uh, we would do this on the Saturday, so that would be uh, Saturday, April twenty-third. Does anybody have any objection to that? One is Easter this year. Make sure that's not Easter Sunday, Easter weekend.
I don't even know.
I think, I think that's the week before.
Week, week before is Easter.
Okay.
Man, we should have done Hide the Invasive Species. And uh, and we could have hi- hid invasive species all through Joey's Trail and. Had the kids hunt for them like Easter eggs. That was a joke, guys. I'm just kidding. All right, so um, so with that, the. We'll make a motion that we have the Earth Day Cleanup um. On the twenty, Saturday, the twenty-third?
Yeah.
Any?
Second.
All right, any conversation, any opposition, any better ideas? If not, uh, go ahead, Sue.
Can I just say that I've been doing this every year, just going to the transfer station on the Saturday closest to Earth Day. With a bunch of plastic bags and um, gloves and just. I don't want to use the word attacking, but going up to every car that comes to put their trash in and asking them if they would like to participate in. Roxbury Road Cleanup. And for the most part, some people say no. But a lot of people say yes and they take the bags and then they don't have to do it that day. They can do it when they want to do it. This is the way it's been. I don't know if you might want to change that. And then they bring back whatever they pick up on the road. And bring it back to the transfer station and I go around and I notice the roads and it makes a huge difference.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I would, I'm going, well, I was going to do it anyway, so I was going to do it this year, same thing. So are you okay with that?
Oh, with you volunteering with us, you mean? Oh, yeah, absolutely, and invite friends.
I mean, if somebody wants to come to the transfer station and work with me, because it's better with two, because one person. You know, you're going up to one person, then another car comes in and then leaves and so you don't hit everybody. So if somebody would like to volunteer, I usually do it like nine to twelve.
The nice thing about this is that we have one more meeting um, before then. So on the thirteenth of April, we'll be having another meeting and we can get into the nitty gritty of, of how to actually put it together. But let's just commit now to the date so the flyers can get uh, put together and everything else. Uh, and Jess could uh, collect those uh, those, those gloves and, and uh, bags from uh. Uh, from Jen Heaton and uh, and that'll be good. So Arbor Day. Do we also want to attack Arbor Day, which would be the following weekend? And if so, what are we going to do? And we don't have to do this, by the way.
I don't, I don't, I think we have enough of on, on our plate for the next couple months.
All right.
Also, I talked about doing um, an event at the park um, on Earth Day.
What, what did we? So what are you thinking? You mean just like hot dogs, hamburgers or something like that, or what, what do you?
I can bring it up here in a sec, uh.
That was just what the list that I added on to that we talked about last meeting and um, I added just a few things to it.
So, again, when you're saying an event at the park, what do you, what, give us a little color of what your thoughts are.
We had talked about maybe that would be um, a place to have someone speaking about the. The invasives or, you know, like from the Garden Club or.
Somebody's saying, have a bunch of people set up tables.
And have like a, have the space there in the park for that kind of thing and then have the lecture and. Uh, you know, the lectures that we were talking about, having people speaking about different things like the invasives or. We talked about maybe if Mike would come and, you know, talk about the bees and pollinator stuff and. Those were just ideas that we threw out there, um.
I think it's way too much for us at this point.
I, I had suggested we kind of um. Kind of get a few topics and then add speakers on those topics. So, but I, I mean, it's, it's, I think it's a great idea, but this, uh, there might be some work recruiting the people to do this and getting it organized.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I do think it's a good idea.
There's a super, super, super lecturer. Her name is Catherine Cook and she actually came to Roxbury's. That lecture uh, that we gave at our um, at the Land Trust. Uh, and she's, she is an expert on dragonflies. And, and pollinators in general. But she is just, she's an incredible photographer and she's an incredible um, lecturer. Uh, just in general, she's down, she's here in Connecticut, so just, you know. FYI, she's a very. Fascinating person. Great resource for a lecture.
So, uh, let me suggest something. If we do this the following weekend and we try to put something together. With volunteer speakers, right? Uh, not budgeted speakers, but volunteers. And we uh, and we can. Uh, make sure that the, the pavilion is available and make sure that the town is behind it. And we can drive it to committee work to fill the tables. Why don't we do that on the twenty-ninth? Because by the twenty-ninth, we would have already had the Earth Day Cleanup and we could potentially. Use it as a, as a soapbox. To promote how much of a cleanup we actually did over the course of that week.
That's hard to measure though. That's hard to measure how much cleanup. Unless you walk around the roads beforehand, take pictures, walk around the roads, you know, following week or something, that's, that's.
The big thing with town cleanups now with smartphones is to, to put hashtags. On Instagram, so we can have people take photos of the bags that they collect and the areas that they collect. And actually, just, just by putting a hashtag, we'll be able to easily collect all those photos. So, and then we could have a slideshow running and. You know, again, I don't even know if that has.
You can't have a slideshow outside. It's just too bright.
Under the pavilion?
It would be difficult, I would think to.
I had it, I, when I did my uh, my uh, my son's um. Re- reveal, we did it under the pavilion. And then, listen, it's not crisp, but it's, it's fine, as long as you have a decent projector.
Well, the other thing too, I wanted to say, like, I don't know the details yet from the Bridgewater Road Cleanup that they're doing through H R A. But I will get those details next week from Jen, but. They're giving out maps, so when people come to pick up the materials. I mean, Sue, and this is not taking away from what you're doing, this would just be in addition to, and it would be advertised, so um. They're somehow going to, you know, let people know when they come and get the materials and give them a map. That they're, they're engaging in winning prizes and I don't know what the details are that, are that, so there will be some sort of way of kind of knowing. You know, who cleaned up what or how much. There will be some way to gauge that a little bit through that.
What would the maps do? What, what would they say? What, what is that purpose of a map?
Of all the roads to clean up, like the main, I guess.
So just pick any road, whether it's a really traveled road and really disgusting or just?
No, that's what she's saying, the roads that are, are, need more cleanup.
I, I don't know what the map that they're giving them is, all the roads or the ones that they feel like need to be most, most cleaned up, but they're giving a map. I knew, I know that part, that they're giving materials, they're giving maps and then they're giving prizes. That's all I know.
Well, sounds all right to me.
All right. Well, again, we'll go over the details of it next, uh, next meeting. Uh, now we know we want to do it, um, and, and we'll already start, now that we have a date, we'll start publicizing it. But do we want to try to do this thing on the twenty-ninth for Arbor Day? At the pavilion? With a bunch of speakers? If we're going to do this, we need all hands on deck.
If, 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 if we're going to do it with volunteer speakers, I, I just don't think it's going to work. I mean, you're going to have to pay, you're going to have to bring in some speakers who are. Conversant on the topic and. Pay them their honorarium. I, I just don't, I just don't see people just volunteering their time to come and do.
Also, it's, it's, it's like eleventh hour. I, I know. Four lectures, four, four or five lectures that week because of Earth Day. I mean, it's just a very. Busy week.
And you don't. And you don't even know how many people might be willing to come unless you offer food. Food always brings people, but that's a whole other dimension to it.
Well, food and good weather too.
Yeah. So before we go spending a bunch of money on this, um. There's no reason why we have to, it's a great idea. It doesn't have to be limited to Earth Day or Arbor Day. It is something that we could figure out a Saturday on, in the spring to do. So if we like the idea but feel stressed about the time now, why don't we? Why don't we? You know, talk to the town. Get some other input and, and look for a May weekend or a June weekend. To have this type of event. Is anybody opposed to that?
Picnic in the park with your Conservation Commission.
I like it. Picnic in the park.
Lot of conservation things, a lot of different aspects.
Yeah. All right, so I nominate Caitlin to chair of. Of the committee for the picnic at the park. So here, second to that much.
I abstain.
All right, um, well, so let's, let's table that and pick it back up because it is eight o'clock, guys. We, we do like to.
Can I just say that, um, can I just say one thing that? One of those. Many lectures that I'm doing that week is at Minor Memorial Library. On April twentieth, at five thirty. About maximizing space in the garden, which is. A lot about ecosystems, so you know, I, I'm. We sort of do have a town lecture.
Yeah. Let's publicize that, you know, um, and again. I do like the idea of the picnic and, and kind of having a, a, a place for all of these great ideas to come together. And, and again, to have more community and I think after the last two years, everybody's going to want to get out and. The fresh air and, and kind of rub elbows with their neighbors again. Um, so that might be a great opportunity to do that, but let's give us more time to, to do it right. Uh, and then also, yeah.
Sorry, really quick, Teresa, Teresa from Minor Memorial, she reached out by email, wanted to know if we wanted to do something with her. For Earth Day. She didn't have any details on what it would be, but wanted to do a children's program, but that could be like another avenue that we could get through. To people on Earth Day. I can reach out to her. I just said I'd find out if we wanted to do it or not, but I can reach out, back out to her. Get details and bring them back in the next meeting.
Okay. I mean, yeah, i- if it's at the library, I'd volunteer on, on behalf of the, the commission, would. Anybody else want to volunteer to see what Teresa has going up on the library? That weekend? Okay, so yeah, reach back out to her and tell, tell her to contact me. Uh, and it's, maybe it's something I can get the, the Masons to participate in too. They had a, they had a really good time at the Story Walk. So they're looking to get involved again as well. All right. All right, so we're gonna, a lot of good stuff there. Uh, let's talk, go back to the projects for two thousand twenty-two. I'm going to go to the easy ones to the most controversial. Uh, does everybody agree that we should keep doing Bat Month in October? Any ideas or opposition to Bat Month?
I like Bat Month. I think um. We need to do maybe a little bit more uh, planning in advance. And make sure that um, our weekends are covered, because I felt like this last year was a little bit of a scramble. But other than that, I think it was just fine. It was fun.
All right, so we want to definitely keep that on the uh, on the books. I don't hear any opposition for that, um. All right, so.
Just maybe simplifying it too, so it's not so much, but also like Erin just said, if it's more, if you're prepared more ahead, ahead of time. Might be better.
We got, we got seven months, so that's a, I think last month, we, last, last year we had seven days, so. We're uh, we're making some progress. All right, so uh, farm tour guide. I, I think. I think it's a great idea. I think it's something that um. Not only would this be good for, for us, but I think this is something that we could, we could maybe get some assistance with. From Western Connecticut Tourism. Of which I'm the, the representative from Roxbury and I'm also a, a, a past chair of that. So, um, if you guys are. Okay with the, with one of our main focuses for two thousand twenty-two being a fo- farm tour guide. You know, I, I'd like to keep that on our, our budget for two thousand twenty-two. Um, anybody have any opposition to that or any ideas about that? Again, we don't have to decide what it is today, it's just.
I have raised a decision about bringing this up, you know, you, you talked about making this a tourism thing. Do we want more tourists coming to Roxbury to come to the farms, you know?
Well, if we want to support the farms, we need that, we need people to buy stuff from the farms.
Yeah, that, that's true, but uh, um. Tony, I'm, I'm just concerned about the level of traffic. If, if we're going to make, if we're going to rent Roxbury a tourist destination, then it's. I think some people may have some objections to that.
It kind of already is, as far as I know, several years ago, probably like five or seven years ago or even more, there was already a huge. Pull to Mine Hill for hikers. I know from my friends in New York City and around the areas, that was a huge draw and there was tons of people over there. Um, we know, you know, from COVID stuff that tons of people came up and were all on the trails and stuff, but. This is, the farm guide is kind of a pet project of mine that I, I wanted to do since we started Sustainable C T. Certification in two thousand eighteen, and this is just. An idea, this is um, just a brochure that from the Land Trust that talks, talks about the donors and stuff. So my idea was just to have like a trifold, little brochure like this with a little map on it. That says where all of the farms are and what you can purchase, whether it's beef, eggs or whatever. And, and so anybody could just go to the market or to the town hall or the library. And it would just be for the new residents here too, or even. Reg- residents that are already here and they just pick up this farm guide and they can see where they can get all their produce and all their, all their. reg- residents that are already here, and they just pick up this Farm Guide and they can see where they can get all their produce and all their all their.
I think getting more support locally, because I I think there are a lot big sources of support can be from people that live here and just don't go to the farms.
Well, what whether whether we we're gonna use the Farm Guide to promote non-residents versus residents, I mean, that's you we we can discuss that later. That's a detail to be discussed later and how we're gonna do that and and what resources we're gonna pull in, but the idea that we want to have some kind of map shows the farms, shows what we can purchase at that farms, how to connect with them via email, via website, via phone numbers, whatever, who does the CSA, that kind of thing. So right now, again, we're just talking about or we're not talking about the actual final project that we want to have, just is this what we want to talk about the rest of two thousand twenty-two?
Ju- just something that I wanted to bring up that I mentioned in the last meeting was that uh doing because I I did the Meet the Farmer project and mo- most of the farmers in our town do not welcome um visitors to their site. They u- usually sell and other places like the market, et cetera. There are actually only a few of our farmers that are set up to um welcome, you know, the public to their to their property, but they do sell elsewhere and town like at the market, et cetera.
Yes, I definitely would not, you know, want to impose on them at all. I wasn't meaning that. Like, I know Riverbank Farm, you don't want to tell people to go there because they don't sell stuff there, but um you know, to make it known, maybe we could have the ones that don't have an actual physical place for you to go to. There's at least four, I think, that I know of um where you can actually go there and purchase directly from the farms, but um maybe the other ones that uh sell at the farmer's markets, different places, you could have a list and say these farms, these local farms are um selling at these farmers markets and milk.
Well, let's put it this way, we're we're not going to do this without the permission of the farms.
Right.
Okay, so we're not going to invite people to somebody's house that doesn't want visitors. So let's put that to the side. Do we want to do the Farm Tour Guide in two thousand twenty-two? Question is yes or no?
Yes.
Anybody?
Yeah, I think, sure.
Any opposition to this? Then it stays on. Now, the big the uh the other big item here is Backpack Blowers Alternative Power Tools. My recommend I'm gonna recommend that we continue to get educated about this in two thousand twenty-two when the education is easily available. Uh but maybe make that a two thousand twenty-three. I think technology will also be a lot farther in two thousand twenty-three. Um and we might have more hands to help us in regards to educating the public about that.
Let me let me just weigh in on something. Some of some of this I know, some of this I'm speculating. The the nature of the complaint that came about to to Patrick uh to the first selectman, at his first meeting, by the way. Uh I I suspect it had to do with um a a commercial leaf blowing, commercial landscapers, the people like uh that are doing this commercially. Because those guys come in with just tons of equipment and they do it in a day. And uh they make a lot in looks. You know, for one day, they're blasting away, they've got, you know, all kinds of power equipment. So I I suspect it's a reaction to that as opposed to an individual homeowner taking his backpack floor. Um but I I can't say that with certainty. I I did speak to Jeremy Johnson about about this, and he's he's aware that he's gotten complaints. He's gotten complaints from people and he's told me a lot of the complaints are from the people he's worked, he's worked on their property, and then when he's doing a neighbor's property, they're complaining to him about the noise he's making over the neighborhood. So that's funny. You know, I I don't know. I don't know what we can do. The none of the towns, the neighboring towns, have anything of any substance when it comes to uh restrictions. I mean, there are some towns, but they're not local.
Well, yeah, Greenwich.
Greenwich doesn't even have that strict of a rule. It's like you know, one back, one blower per property, but Greenwich is like quarter acre lots. So you know, it's a different situation compared to Roxbury.
I agree with you. I think that this complaint came the weekend, somebody was reading the article in the New York Times. At that time, somebody was leaf blowing. And they said, hey, I have, this is a great idea for something for me to complain about. Let me complain about it. So again, for two thousand twenty-two, I think we have our plate our plate full plus other stuff is gonna come up. I think we educate ourselves uh about renewable energy in general and different ways that we can promote it into town. Uh but we don't make a a focus of the year and definitely.
Let me just ask you a question. Do we owe do we owe response to uh the First Selectman's Office? Only because it was in the minutes that of that meeting that uh he he said the Conservation Commission is gonna look into this and come back with a recommendation. So do we owe a response?
Uh I would say, yeah, I mean, I've I've spoken with Patrick about it. There's not an official response, but um you know, there's nothing that we're gonna bring. The the town does not want to talk about this again in a a board of selectmen's meeting, right? But um yeah, we can, we can add it to next month's um next month's agenda to create another response. I I that's a great idea, Tony. That's a great idea. Let's create a response in April. And in in that, we can include that. We're gonna continue to to monitor the situation as great ideas come up, we'll share them with the town.
Closer to leaf blowing season, which is gonna be next September, next October. You put something in the town email blast that says, you know, you know, people should be should be uh uh considerate of their neighbors and, you know, and don't be out there blowing leaves at seven o'clock in the morning uh on a Sunday. Something along those lines.
I got you. I'm I'm with you. Okay, but as far as a main focal point for two thousand and twenty-two, can we all agree that that's not gonna make the list?
Agreed.
Okay.
Yes.
A- any opposition to that? All right, so we're gonna move on. Any other suggestions of things that you think we should focus on in two thousand twenty-two?
You know, I'm gonna, and and I'm not necessarily advocating for this, but let me just uh throw it out there. We had talked a while back, way back, about updating the this down thing called a parcel index. And, you know, I'm not sure is that that's that's a big nut. Do we wanna do you want to look into that? Do you want to take it on?
It's something that we constantly uh it it just pops up every now and then. And it's a big budget item. It's getting less expensive every year. And it's something that um you know, it it just takes time to talk to our surrounding communities. To me, I think it's gonna the solution's gonna be when Washington and Bridgewater and us and probably one or two other municipalities want to kind of chip in and agree to hire the same the same person. Uh I I don't think this is a two thousand twenty-two thing. If it if it comes back up again, if Jimmy says, hey, we kind of need this now, now's the right time, or zoning says, hey, we need this, now's the right time, um maybe we bring it back up and put it back in. But I don't think we go looking for it to resurrect it.
Yeah, and how does it how does it dovetail with his mapping software? Is it um Jimmy Hobo was talking about, the GIS?
Well, the that's the the one and the same, so. There would be the same project.
I think and and it used to be done by by Route Four setting before the there is a there is a parcel index available right now, but it's very antiquated.
Yeah, the the GIS system, I uh not all of them, but many of them actually have that in it. So um so again, I I think we have our hands full. Once we get some some more hands on deck to help us, maybe we bring that back in. I think there's enough stuff going on in town now. You know, it'd be cool, Tony, I just had an idea, and I know I you love when I have ideas. If the money that was when we have the solar field, the money that gets generated or saved by the town gets redirected to the new GIS system. Right? It's a land lease. They're making like fifty grand a year off of these things after the energy savings. I mean, that right there is a great budget item. You know, we're gonna create an expense and cover it in this in the same swap. All right, so no other things for for budget items for this year, Tony?
Speechless.
Tony, we'll um we'll touch base and um and see if that's already been submitted and what kind of wiggle room we can have for this year. And who knows, we might have new leadership next month anyways, so let's we'll uh we'll take that up then. Hey, guys. The next item is a scary one for me. It's probably the scariest item um of my tenure here as chairman, and that is the secretary position. Uh Erin has taken up, and does everybody know that Erin got a new job?
No.
Well, I I I on behalf of the Conservation Commission, now we want to congratulate Erin on her new job, and Erin, can you tell us about your new job?
Thank you. Yeah, so I was hired by White Memorial in Litchfield. They're a conservation center and a they have a four thousand acres um in Litchfield and and Morris. And um I am the new environmental educator up there, so I work under our education director, and we do a bunch of outreach programs. We do onsite programs, camps, schools. So like right now, I'm doing mostly like waterbury school programs and library programs, and actually, I'll be in Roxbury in a couple of months. Let's say it's like in June, I think. I'm talking to Teresa now, so you guys might get to see me then.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
So with that.
You still planning on going to graduate school?
Yes. I was accepted and I am still going.
Well, good for you.
Thank you.
So uh that's kind of the joke I was making about that little sliver that's still available on her plate. But she needs she definitely needs to 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 give herself a little bit more time. Uh and she's asked to take a step back. When you take a say, uh how far of a step back are we talking about, Erin? Are we talking like six months? Are we talking about indefinite? Are we talking about two months? What are we talking about?
So uh uh Mike, uh my husband, he is is leaving for six months. So it is going to be much more stressful uh around here, and my workload is going to double, so I, six months would be sufficient.
Okay. So um she's she's brought that to to the attention of the of the commission. And we're gonna have elections next month, uh so that kind of makes it a a natural fit. But if some way she has agreed to continue to help, of course, um and to train whoever whoever's gonna take that seat, it's it's, to me, the chairman runs the meeting. Uh but the secretary has done an amazing amount of work. And uh so if anyone thinks they have it in them, uh please reach out to myself or Erin over the next couple of weeks so that we can um make sure that that you're familiar with the responsibilities, that you are um, you know, ready to take that on. And um and then that way we can put it on the ballot for next uh next month. Sound good?
Sounds good to me.
All right, and with that, I'm going, anything else anyone wants to bring up? All right, with that, I'm gonna ask for a uh suggestion for the good of the order adjournment for this evening. Do I hear a motion? I hear a motion. Do I have a second to that motion?
One second.
All right, any opposed? With that, everyone, I say good evening. Jonathan, thank you so much. We normally, we normally try to keep it to eight, but this was a big meeting, so.
It's okay. I'm I'm used to these kind of meetings, so former president of the Planet Lawyers Association in Washington, so I often my meetings over too, so I know what that's.
All right, well, thank you all, and and we'll uh look forward to some productive emails over the course of this next month and uh and they might even include baby pictures, so make sure you open. All right, folks, have a good night. Thank you.
Night, everybody.
Congratulations, Erin. That's fabulous.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. That's wonderful.
Yes, congratulations.
Thanks, guys.
Lorenzo, your baby is beautiful.
Oh, thank you. I'm just ha- I'm just happy he's better looking than me. That was my that was my that's my whole goal. All right, you broke up a little bit there, Kathy. All right, guys, have a great night.
Bye.
Thank you, bye.